Nice to meet you.
Hey, I'm Paul.
Paul?
Good to meet you.
So I can bring my backpack. It's totally up to you, not really, probably can't show anything at this point. But there'll be a moment when they'll ask, because anyone here is speaking on the copy app, you can go up and just sort of explain the situation and add anything that you feel that we left out. If you just want to say, I'm available for any questions, that also works. Okay.
That's for his book.
My case.
Eight minutes away. Hey, good to see you. Yeah.
How are you doing? Cheyenne, it's good to see you right up. Like your foray into the theme song, right? This is your debut.
No, not today.
No, but you wrote the staff memos.
Yeah, I'm still presenting. For that, yeah.
Excellent.
Did you have a good Fourth of July?
It was really.
Any fireworks or no fireworks?
Oh, on TV. My God, we had so much rain in Dunwoody. I don't know where. Did you all have rain wherever you were?
I was, I was up in New Jersey. And they, it was perfectly dry and sunny.
Wow.
And.
It was insanely raining here.
Yeah, I heard.
During the break, during the fireworks.
Yep, picture road breaks get wiped out. Yep.
What you, what, what? Do you have rain? Rain?
And I was in one of these, there wasn't that much rain, but it sort of looked very bad.
But we didn't have the torrential downpour.
No.
Ever remember getting that kind of rain on the Fourth of July like we did.
Oh, well. It happened.
It's.
Close.
Yeah.
Well, there was always seeing. Well, anyway, they'd say probably. We have lost the garden.
We just. We did have an issue on it. So then.
Um, can we? How are you? I mean, I don't. Yes. You know, the party.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, thank you. I've never liked. I just. I think. Well, I surrender.
Yeah.
Is.
Start off. All the.
Hey, do you? Hey.
We were. For another three days. Yeah. I think it's. Yeah. We can.
Thanks.
Hey, how are you? Good to see you. How you doing? I should. Yeah. Yeah. You look. It's a big. Not.
Yeah. 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 I'm a regular. That's the same.
Brilliant.
It's also. I'm. I thought it was there.
The shower.
There, you know.
Awesome. But it's.
So. The. Yeah.
I saw six, right? We were, we were waiting. It is 6:00 PM, so we're going to call to order the zoning Board of Appeals meeting for July 6, 2023. A roll call that'll be shown that we do have everyone except Artie. So good to see everybody despite the busy summer season. Uh, the minutes, approval of the June minutes, did anyone have a chance to review or edit if necessary? Or do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the June minutes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving the June minutes?
I.
Approved, thank you. Not aware of any organizational procedural items this evening, all right, okay. Unfinished business? None, it's all new business this evening. So let's start with application ZBA 23-07. Homeowners at 4796 Ridgeview Road are requesting a variance from Chapter 27, Section 269 to allow three retaining walls to encroach into the rear and side setbacks.
John. The preamble. The Constitution.
But before we do that, the one that I have memorized is the preamble. You're supposed to nudge me. Uh, the zoning Board of Appeals is the preamble, the chairman's preamble that we have to cite every week just to kind of set the tone and explain exactly what we're responsible for, what we're not. The zoning Board of Appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning Board of Appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought before the zoning Board of Appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, the sign ordinance, and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height. Further, the board hears cases regarding an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning Board of Appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within 30 days after the decision here is rendered. So now we're going to our first case. I was trying to be quick, about six o'clock.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, board members. Um, you've read the, the first case into the record already, so I'll go on with this. This one you know already, uh, because it's been before the zoning Board of Appeals in 2021. Uh, for a lot of coverage variance. At the time, it was before you, it was from the construction of a pool and the fire pit, those have been constructed now. Um, the zoning Board of Appeals granted a increase in lot coverage from 40 to 46.2% at the time. The, what's before you now is that as part of the construction project, um, the applicant has built retaining walls and the setbacks and the rear and and the rear and side yards, um, and without obtaining sort of the proper permits for this, um, so that before you all now to get, um, the approval for those improvements. Um, and again, like you, you, this is more or less like what was before you, um, as part of the the variance in, in 2021, it's just that at the time this was built, um, the homeowner made sort of on the spot or like the contractor of the homeowner made on the spot adjustments to this in terms of grading, you know, to create a more level backyard and then the, the backyard would have been relatively steep without those retaining walls, so then the contractor landscaper at the time proposed retaining walls that were put in, um, because neither the contractor nor the homeowner knew that they needed to obtain permits for this. Um, if the sort of regular order of things would have been followed, we could have done this special administrative permit, so without a public hearing. But because it's after the fact, it comes before you all um, as a full-fledged variance request. Um, so this is how it looks now, um, there's two retaining walls on the side relatively close to the property line to the south. The, the, that issue that they ran into also is that they build it over the cap county sewer easement. They've worked with the county to see if they could maintain the walls and the county has not granted that. So independent of what you all decide tonight, uh, they will take out that segment that's in the, in the sewer easement and have to grade it. That's sort of a, a slight image here, how it's going to look in the future. So take out that 20-foot segment of the retaining wall that's in the in the sewer easement that have to grade it based on our grading requirements, which is a three-to-one slope. And what they're asking, uh, tonight is to have those those other segments of retaining wall that are not in the easement for those to remain. Um, overall, you know, it's at this point to take out the retaining walls would create potential erosion issues um, to sort of backfill the wall, it could potentially create structural issues with the pool also because it's sitting up top, you know, about four feet elevated. You know, overall, they were installed to create a more sort of usable backyard and to help stabilize the slope over there, which our engineer sort of agrees that, that it does that. Um, the reason there before you all is because they didn't follow the order of things, but it could have been approved. Had they done so, um, and then overall, it's no, it's, it's, it's a relatively minor improvement, retaining walls about three and a half feet tall, so they're under four feet. And there's no sort of major concerns with those. Um, the applicant has worked with the property owner in the south on on items, there were erosion issues on their property. And they've both already sort of done some cleanup there and will after it's all said and done, and this segment of the wall is taken out, will work with them and, and getting sort of parts of the yard fixed that had erosion issues. Um, you'll find that sort of, uh, shown in the third condition here that is reflecting that, so we'll, um, check in with the homeowner with the neighbor to see if that's all taken care of before we'll finally sign off on this, should you all approve it. And with that, I'm ready for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Or?
I had a couple of questions. Um. First staff. So in terms of the erosion control, you said that the neighbor will work with the homeowner and they will have to agree on the modified erosion control for that section of wall that's being removed. It, it, do you? At what point do you have to sign off on that and how does that work to know that that modification has been fixed?
The, um, the issue was with the initial construction at the time before the walls came in. That's when you had sort of water runoff, that's now sort of under, under control because of the retaining walls. The issue is that the fence was slightly bent and that there was some of the water runoff during construction washed out sort of parts of the neighbor's yard. It's not, not sort of major runoff, but it's not pleasant, you know, it's not, not pretty. Um, so the applicant will have to come in for a permit with us for this work. And then we'll have a final sign off on that permit and as part of that, we'll do we'll do a check-in with the neighbor, uh, but the, the process is agreed upon, so the, the two parties talk. And they have something that's worked out, they just want to do it after the fact, after the wall is after the wall segment is taken out, to make sure that everything can be cleaned up at once.
Okay, so that kind of leads into the second question. When taking out this section of wall that is currently providing stability and, and erosion prevention. Um, what happens? I know you said that they'll have to regrade it. Do they work with you on that? Plan before it's approved or how does that work?
Yeah, it's pretty much the end that they have, you know, that, that's what's, I think, shared on the screen right now. Where they have those in that segment where the easement is, you can see that it has it shows a small like plus zero point zero and a small plus two point zero. So they'd have to be graded that far back because of the height to sort of make up the height. And have the final slope, it'll be a three-to-one slope, which is something that's, that's allowed by ordinance and that's generally stable. During the construction, we'll ask for, um, silt fencing to make sure that nothing sort of immediately runs off, but, um, there's always an amount that, that gets out with something like this. If a stabilized soap surface gets, gets disturbed, um, that's, that's why they want to clean it up after the fact.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to confirm the encroachment, right, is fairly significant, right, the setbacks are, but that's the only neighbor really directly affected is the one that they're mitigating the, the runoff with. There was no other for or against from neighbors that I saw in the packet.
No, we didn't have anything, but someone who, uh, had inquired, it's the neighbor to, um, the left on the screen. But he didn't end up submitting anything. So it's only, we've only heard from the neighbor to the south, um, who has submitted their comment as part of the package.
Okay, thanks. No questions? So with that, we'll allow the applicant to, uh, address the board and, uh, speak in favor of the his application.
Yeah, thank you for, uh, hearing this application today and, uh, appreciate your time.
Uh, I'm sorry, just please take your name and address, just to.
This is Mel, Mel Hapsall, uh, 4796 Ridgeview Road, Dunwoody, 30338. Uh, as Paul and this team, we worked with them for the last few months. The main problem happened when they dug the pool, there were the drain pipes from our roof all the way to the back of the yard, so that was all broken down. And it was a heavy rain that year. Each time we get rain, all the dirt will move through because there is nothing moving the water from our roof to the back of the yard, so it'll push dirt to our neighbors. We had a silt fence first time and got a turin it. A lot of spillage into their yard. The second time we put a silt fence again, it pushed against their fence, so we had to put those walls right away. And when we consulted with our team and landscape, they told us as long as less than four feet, you're good. Obviously, we all overlooked the setback part from the ordinance, which we weren't aware of. And that was brought our attention by the team. So what we're asking is to keep those walls, obviously there is a part that's over there easement that's accounted, and they don't have a variance for it. Uh, and we will slope it based on the plan three-to-one. We've spoken with our neighbor, we've cleaned all the parts that's in the front, the front wall that you see, everything there has been taken care of. So the other part, what our landscape and our neighbor and us agreed on, as he slopes, he's going to use some of that dirt to level off their yard too, because their yard does have like a big slope down. This way it will prevent any erosion down to their part. And he'll clean it, we will mulch it for them the same way we did on our side of the fence.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone here in opposition? All right. With that, we'll open it back up to board discussion, closed public comment.
It's nice to see neighbors being neighborly and working together, and I'm glad that once it was brought to the attention, it wasn't a everyone's able to work together and realize that we need to come up with a solution, and it seems like they came up with the best solution. Because the encroachment is very I mean, granting that, um, granting that variance for that encroachment might have been hard before the fact.
Right.
That close, so it's nice that the neighbor's okay with it and the neighbor behind hasn't doesn't have any, because they've seen it up, so that's good. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
A little surprising, the landscapers didn't see the.
Yeah, having.
That's, that's.
I was always going to say is whoever was contracted to do that job should have known better, obviously. Um, because this doesn't seem like, thankfully, it seems like parties worked it out, okay, but that's not always the case, as we've seen. Um, so be careful who you use to do to work on your yard or in your house.
Well, the county issue is being addressed separately, so, um, there's that, so, all right.
Um, I move to approve the, uh, oh, did, did you want to ask if there's any more questions or comments?
No, I think.
Okay, um, I moved to approve the request for a variance from Chapter 27, Section 397 to allow three retaining walls to encroach into the rear and side setbacks with the following conditions. One, the encroachment of the retaining walls in the side and rear setback shall be limited to the extent shown on the submitted site plan prepared by McClung Surveying dated December 28th, 2022. Two, any encroachment into the sanitary sewer easement shall be removed within 60 days of the granting of this approval. The property owner shall provide a site plan demonstrating the final slope over the sewer easement. Approval of the final slope is subject to the city engineer. And three, the property owner shall coordinate with adjacent neighbor at 4788 Ridgeview Road to clean and move sediment to fill areas affected by the removal of the retaining walls.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
A second.
Person second on the table, all those in favor?
Hi.
Pass these unanimously, congratulations. Second case this evening is ZBA 23-08. Mark and Rebecca Goldman, homeowners at 4947 Millbrook Drive, request for a quick, uh, variance from Chapter 16, Section 78 to allow a fence to encroach into the 75-foot stream buffer.
So this is, um, one of those cases where the applicant has a creek in the backyard that has the associated stream buffers, you can see it on the right-hand side, this is a look sort of from the rear of the house towards the stream. Um, that's their backyard and technically um, sort of under our regulations, you know, fences on the loud and stream buffer, so all these cases come before you all as a variance. Um, the second, so the first yellow line or the left-hand yellow line you see here is the 75-foot stream buffer. This one also goes into the 25-foot stream buffer, but under state requirements, fences are exempt. Um, so that's why this case does not have a separate state variance associated with this. What they're trying to do is fence in their backyard, uh, with a split rail fence, as you can see on the right-hand side. So it's a wooden fence with openings, um, and they're tying it into their neighbor's fence on the side and they have approval for that as well. Um, they also have a drainage easement in the back that we're not 100% sure where exactly it comes from, but they're not going into that drainage easements. Um, overall, again, like these fences are like relatively, um, a small ask for variances and we don't have no concerns about this one, there's no there's no, um, flood zones or anything on, on this stream. And therefore we're recommending approval with our standard conditions.
Thanks, Paul. Any questions for staff?
I do have one question. Uh, I'm just curious, why does the state exempt fences from their buffer?
Because the, the, the state and we, so we both do it individually. Um, we have sort of specific items that are exempt due to their small impact. So the statement says that fences have such a small impact that you know, they're, they're just exempt period. While the city of Dunwoody has separate exemptions, that just do not include fences as part of this. We're in fact working on the tax amendment right now. Uh, given sort of on the, the track record of the zoning Board of Appeals historically to approve these, to just go ahead and make it a make it a allowed item, um, but that is still, you know, several months out and it's a legislative process.
Yep. No more questions for staff? Do the applicants care to address the board and state their case? Our applicant?
Thanks for having me, Rebecca Goldman, 4947 Millbrook Drive. Um, we just need a fence in our backyard to keep my kids and my dog in. Um, so hopefully it's not a problem to do that. Two of our neighbors already have a fence, so nobody has a problem with it. Anything else?
I like this split rail design.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I like being in the woods too, but I need to keep my family safe.
If you have a little boy, then he may find a way to get through that fence.
Girls, but they might also.
They may also, yes.
No, they won't. This is our solution.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. You do? Oh, you're. Um, okay, we're good. Any, anybody else want to speak in favor of this? Or anyone in opposition? Okay, we're good. We'll close it for the board.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Uh, I move to approve the request for a variance from Chapter 16, Section 78 to allow a fence to encroach in the 75-foot stream buffer with the following conditions. Number one, the fence must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Rebecca Goldman and dated March 24th, 2023. Number two, the fence shall be installed with hand tools only. Number three, sorry, that was number two, I don't know if I said the wrong number. Um, if construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void. I second.
Thank you. But first and second, all those in favor. Yeah. It is approved. Thank you. Final case this evening is ZBA 23-10. Teresa Gardner, homeowner of 5290 Manhasset Cove. Request a variance from Chapters 27, Section 58 to allow a deck to encroach into the rear setback.
All right, hi, everyone.
All right. Hi, everyone.
Okay.
So these are the existing conditions as shown in the survey to the right. There's a lake on the survey. It's named Mount Vernon Lake. Behind the house, which has this twenty five foot state buffer that covers approximately a fourth of the property. There's an existing two hundred and twenty square foot screen porch to the rear of the house. There's also an existing covered stoop and concrete pad to the rear of the house that encroaches slightly into the twenty five foot state buffer. A portion of the rear part of the existing house shown in the photo to the left is encroaching into the forty foot rear setback. Um, as a brief history on um, recent events of the property in April, one of the city site inspectors noticed unpermitted land disturbance on the property, including clearing of the backyard, which requires a permit due to the lake buffer. Since then, the rear of the property has been under a stop work order. Uh, with the exception that landscaping to the front of the property has been allowed to continue. Um, the property has been cited for clearing and grading within the twenty five foot state buffer. And the homeowner has a court date on July tenth to sort all of that out. So the applicant proposes to construct a three hundred and sixty square foot wooden deck and a forty two square foot set of steps to the rear of the house. This project will not in, uh, this project, the stop work order has no bearing on this, except for the fact that they won't be able to move forward with construction until that's lifted. Um, but no part of this project has been done without a permit thus far. That was other work. And so this is not an asking for forgiveness for the, since the deck and the steps have not been started yet. The steps and the, the deck and associated steps shown on the site plan in red, will encroach a maximum of approximately twenty one feet into the rear setback, which is shown in that blue line. Um, and will be a maximum of approximately six feet in height above grade. Um, sixteen point six, six square foot feet of the deck will encroach into the twenty five foot state lake buffer. This is exempt from the state buffer requirements because it is under a hundred square feet. The existing screen porch and covered soup will remain as is. So just as a reminder, this is a rear setback variance request only. It's a little confusing with the lake buffer, but there's no, there's no issues with that since the portion that is encroaching into the lake buffer is exempt from the state buffer requirements. So we're just focusing on the rear setback variance. So the subject property meets the minimum standards for lot width, but it's slightly smaller than it should be for the typical R one hundred zoning district. It's about fourteen thousand square feet and per our code, it's supposed to be fifteen thousand. Um, there's a slope of approximately ten feet from the front of the property to the rear of the property and an additional slope of four feet from the southern property edge to the northern property edge. A deck less than, less than thirty inches in height above grade would not require a variance to encroach into the rear setback. But the unique topography conditions of the subject property necessitate a raised deck. A portion of the rear part of the existing home already encroaches into the rear setback. This limits the buildable area that's already slightly limited due to the smaller size of the lot. And this leaves limited room for improvements to the rear of the property. A deck is a pretty common improvement to homes in this neighborhood and the project appears to be the minimum necessary to accommodate the improvements to the property. Approximately a fifth of the lots in this subdivision have decks that appear to encroach into the rear minimum setback. But a majority of the properties within this subdivision could construct decks without needing to encroach into the rear setback. Therefore, staff does not find that the requested variance would constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties. Without accounting for the unique conditions of the site, such as the topography, the strict application of the setbacks could prevent incremental changes to the use of the property, which staff considers a practical difficulty. Overall, staff finds that the project would not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare and that the request does meet the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the request, subject to the conditions shown on the screen here. And I'm available for any questions. These are our standard conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Yes, I have a few. Okay, so I'm curious if there, the lot coverage. I mean, I get the sense that adding the deck does not significantly alter the um, coverage.
Correct. It's pervasive, so it won't impact.
Okay.
The lock bridge.
Okay. And then also, you mentioned that the lot is technically smaller than the R one hundred zoning. And I was just curious what the different, what the implications are, if there are different setback amounts or, or limits for, what would that be like in R, what's the next down from an R one hundred?
R eighty five. Um, so R eighty five would have slightly different setbacks. Um, but in this case, a fair amount of the lots that we have in the R one hundred zoning district don't necessarily meet the minimum size or the minimum frontage. We've, a fair amount of those end up coming in for variances since the um, zoning was applied after the fact. For most of these, I believe this property was, uh, this house was constructed around the nineteen seventies. So I'm, I'm sure the lot was just not quite up to our current standards.
So that's not really a, I mean, you, you wouldn't be considering this in a different perspective if it were zoned R eighty five.
Um, no, I, I, I only mention it because you know, if the lot's already a little smaller than what's allowed and it, and it's supposed to have the same setbacks, it just means that there's a little bit less buildable area.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Would the applicants care to uh, address the board?
Hello, um, Teresa Gardner, uh, live at fifty two ninety Manhasset Cove. So, um, I just wanted to um, point out that I know we had the uh, stop work order. But we had done a survey before we ever started this. Um, in fact, our landscape architect wouldn't do the, the plan without a survey. So we did the survey and it did not show that setback. It didn't show the um, lake setback either. So we were not aware of that. But we were grading um, in that one area in the uh, the low spot in the corner, um, because our basement had been flooding. So we're trying to get the grading to uh, work better for that. So.
Sure. Okay, any questions? No. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of the application? Or any in opposition? No, they just walk in the door, maybe. Okay. Okay, we'll close the public comment. Board, thoughts, motions, questions?
I actually have a comment. So if we do approve, I think that they, we should give them more like, until the stop work order. So it says commenced within two years of the granting of the variance. I don't know when the stop work order is going to be lifted. So if we approve, we might want to give them a little bit more time. Because I don't know how long Decap County is gonna leave a stop work order.
Case goes July tenth, so I think it'll be determined in four days.
Okay. Yeah, so the, the case goes um, before July, or it goes July twelfth. And just as a quick note, it's our stop work order, not to have counties.
Right.
So they'll, so they'll sort it all out um, in Cork here.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay, but if you wanted to make a motion to approve and you could modify that to say two years from the lifting of the stop work order. I guess that would be within your prerogative to.
I just refresh my moment. What, what, uh, you mentioned the stop workers, not necessarily directly related to this variance, but it is in some sort of fashion. What initiated the stop work order? Was it construction that commenced without permitting and, and went into the setback?
Um, so it was clearing and grading within the lake buffer. Um, the clearing and grading within the setback is not a problem, so that's not an issue. Um, yeah, our, our city, I, I believe our city site inspectors were looking at another property on the street and just noticed that there was some work going on and that there wasn't an active permit at that time.
Okay, so this is not, this is cities like, not necessarily like a homeowners association related or neighborhood related like, you know, others associations like Kingsley, for example.
I believe it's a state lake.
Okay.
No, it's a, uh, it's a private lake, but it's considered sort of under, uh, it's a, considered a water of the state from a regulatory standpoint. So the same buffers, that would be sort of called a state stream buffers are really sort of buffers around the waters of the state of Georgia. Um, and they include lakes and streams and so forth.
Okay, just wanted that clarification. Thanks.
And so they, they need a permit to do the clearing and grading within the state buffer. They don't need it for the, for the deck project. But they do need it to just clear and grade generally to the type of.
And that's what they're working out with you right now.
Yeah, so that is what they're working on sorting out and getting that underway.
So with that in mind, they can start construction.
Once the stop work order.
Once the stop works lifted, so they're good. Okay, thank you.
There you go. Claire?
All right, I'd like to make a motion then. I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter twenty seven, section fifty eight, to allow a deck to encroach into the rear setback with the following conditions. One, construction of the deck and stairs must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Pollock and Associates Inc. Dated for nineteen twenty, twenty twenty three, C A P N X A. Construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of the, no, the lifting of the stop work order. Um, approval shall be void.
My second.
First and a second, all those in favor? Hi, unanimous. It's approved. Thank you. Other business? No one's registered for public comment, I don't think this evening. Board comment? We are adjourned.
I have a board comment, I do. I would like to state strongly how happy I am to hear that the city is recommending looking into approving.
Yes.
Senses in the sip.
Right.
Not the setback, excuse me, in the, the buffer.
That'd be under administrative process, right? Uh, instead of, instead of actually going.
So we would, it would, right, you can explain how it would help us.
So, um, right now, uh, procedurally, they would have to obtain a variance from you all first from that section of the code and then would obtain a fence permit. And we would maintain the fence permit section, but that's really just like a, a one day, two day turnaround kind of a thing. That's free to the applicant while like the variance costs four hundred dollars approximately. So it's, it speeds it up by approximately three months. And would say approximately four hundred dollars because we're not going through this process. It would still have to get a fence permit for this, but that's more like a informal conversation to make sure that it meets all the, the requirements.
And the fencing requirements then itself are obviously separate from just uh, triggering a stream buffer variance, right? So.
So the, the fence requirements would still apply like the general ones that we have in the zoning code. It's just that it, it does not need to obtain a variance from a stream buffer.
Well, thank you very much. I strongly support that action.
Thanks for sharing. With that, we adjourned.